Welcome to the June 29th Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are calling in via Zoom web conference. The meeting is being livestreamed and cable-broadcasted by the Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast Channel 98, and Verizon Channel 23, and on ECAT's website, www.easterncat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@easton.ma.us. That will go to Michael Blanchard, and he will get the questions to us. Or you could pose your question in the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum, starting with Craig.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Charles King.
Mark Lamb.
There we go, and Dottie Fulgenetti, terrific. The first item that we have is a timed item, which is a public hearing. Craig, do you want to read the public hearing notice on that?
Absolutely. The Eastern Select Board as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing by remote meeting via Zoom, joined by, excuse me, on Monday, June 29, 2020, at 5:00 PM, to consider and act upon an application for a junk dealer's license, submitted by Eric Dupree doing business as Emporium of Retro and Interesting Collectibles, 447 Turnpike Street, Eastern, Massachusetts, to engage in the collection, dealing in, keeping a shop for the purchase, sale, resale, or barter of junk, old and precious metals, and/or secondhand articles. Pursue it to Town of Eastern Bylaw Section 156-2, parentheses, "C", with a plan on file, the Select Board's office.
Okay, thank you, Craig. I don't see that Mr. Dupree is on, as an attendee. So, Michael, do you want to just give us a little overview of what this is?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this is currently an existing business called Land Electronics at 447 Turnpike Street. Mr. Dupree would be taking over that business. There would be a name change, but much of the business would be the same, selling collectibles. You'd be also buying collectibles under this quote-unquote "junk dealers license". The applications in your packet has been circulated to the various town departments for comment, and at this point, we recommend your approval of the license subject to the following conditions, which are listed in your agenda notes, basically are taken right from the Junk Dealer Regulations, which are a dealer must maintain a 21-day holding period on all transactions over $500. Photocopies of picture IDs shall be taken for all those who sell any item valued over $500. A list of all transactions valued over $500 shall be submitted to the Eastern Police Department within one week of the transaction. Purchases from persons less than 18 years of age are prohibited, and the dealer must hold a current business certificate from the town clerk's office. The manager, I believe, Mr. Dupree may have just joined us. So, if you'd like, I can move him over.
Sure. So, Mr. Dupree, we've put you in the list of panelists. So, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you can tell us a little bit about your business, where you're located, what you're going to be doing. Michael just gave us kind of a general description, but we'd like to give you this opportunity to showcase what you're doing, and then we'll deliberate and vote.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
We can, thank you.
Yes.
Excellent. My name's Eric Dupree. I'm from the town of Mansfield, Massachusetts, and I've been doing this type of work for a long time now. I used to do landscaping, but this is my passion, really. We were an electronics store and were more collectibles and toys and video games now, so it's much more family-friendly. And like I said, this is my lifelong dream, so this is everything I've ever wanted.
That's terrific. So, give us a landmark where you're located, so the people that are watching know where to go visit you.
447 Turnpike Street, and that's right on 138 and South Eastern.
Is that in the plaza where Cafe Hayashi is?
Yes, it is, with Linto's Pizza, and there's the dry cleaner and all that great stuff. Yep.
Terrific, excellent. All right, any questions from anyone on the board?
Chuck King, just a question of curiosity. What does the 21-day holding period mean, and what is the purpose of it?
It's, in my eyes, it's to deter people from doing shady things, nefarious dealings, like trying to steal stuff from people. I've seen it in my line of work, not directly, but indirectly, and it's heartbreaking to see a son take something from his mother that wasn't his to sell for whatever reasons. So, in my eyes, that's to make sure that stuff doesn't go through.
Mr. Dupree is correct. It gives the police department an opportunity to investigate and to see if any stolen items may have possibly been sold. Gives them a chance to track that down.
Exactly.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the application for the Junk Dealer's License, subject to the conditions that are listed in the packet?
So moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Brusart.
Craig and Tom, and a roll call vote.
Craig Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
Chuck King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Congratulations, Mr. Dupree, and we wish you the best of luck in your new business. Welcome to Eastern.
Thank you very much, this means the world to me.
Great, that can be helpful.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, next on the agenda is an annual reappointment of Constable Robert Bishop.
You'll find in your packets an application from Mr. Bishop for reappointment as a constable. Mr. Bishop does currently serve as a constable for the town of Eastern, but his term is set to expire at the end of this month, and he has applied for a reappointment for an additional three-year term. I recommend approval via roll call to reappoint Mr. Bishop with the condition that the application is approved by the police chief and the treasure collector, as well as Mr. Bishop provide the town clerk's office with an updated bond.
Great, anyone have any questions for Michael? Okay.
Chuck, is there only one constable on town?
There's not, there's a number, but so many are up each year. This year, we actually had three up. Mr. Bishop was the only applicant that had applied. We do believe there's one additional coming in. We just had communication with today, but that can go on a future agenda.
Okay.
Okay, if somebody would like to make a motion to reappoint Robert Bishop as constable, subject to the conditions that Michael just outlined.
So moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Craig and Tom, and a roll call vote, Craig.
Barger Bishop.
Brusart Bishop.
King Bishop.
Lamb Bishop.
Fulgenetti Bishop, terrific. Okay, next, we have the Annual Board and Committee Volunteer Appointments. The first appointments that we're going to be looking at are the ones that are uncontested. And just give me a second to get my paperwork here.
Dottie, while you look, I'll just mention, you know, we're so fortunate that we have such a great volunteerism, level of volunteerism in Eastern. As you'll see in your packet, there is a list for the uncontested volunteer seats for your consideration today, with the associated terms for each of those appointments. There also is the applications that were submitted, giving some detail of their interest and any prior experience they may have. You'll see that incumbents are indicated as they are currently serving, and our recommendation would be to vote the uncontested volunteers as a slate, as presented on the list, as part of the agenda.
Okay, I would like to take a second just to read through what committee and who the applicants were for that, for the people at home. I know that there's been a lot of interest in applying for the boards and committees, and one of the things that I think is important on here is that there are still some boards and committees that we need more people for. So, I'll just quickly go through. For the Agricultural Commission, we have Eric Silberman and Grant West. Eric is an incumbent, and there are two seats for appointments. So, they would both be appointed to three-year terms expiring June 2023. The Audit Committee, one new name, Stephanie Elia, and that would be a two-year term expiring in June 2022. The Cable Advisory Committee, Neil Lerner, one seat available, and that's for three years expiring June 30, 2023. The Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee, Grant West, but there are two positions open, so there is still one additional position that's available, that's open for that. So, we hope people that are interested in the environment would be good candidates for that kind of a position. And the three-year seat would go to Grant West, and then there's the two-year seat that's available. The Cemetery Commission, Kit Minsky, for a three-year term, June 30, 2023. The Council on Aging, there's three seats available. Kathleen Herry and Jean Sharing are the incumbents, and a new name, Stephen Lyons. Those are for three years expiring June 30, 2023. The Cultural Council, we have two incumbents on that, but there's four seats open, Doug O'Rourke and Ashley Ratfield, and there's two more seats available on that. So, for people that are interested in the arts and culture of the community, that committee gives grants to people and organizations that will further the cultural missions of the town. The Historical Commission, there are two incumbents. So, Amy Spencer and Greg Strange are the regulars, and there's one alternate that's still open, Michael. So, those are three-year terms. The Human Resources Board, we didn't have any, there's one seat open, and we didn't have any applications for that. The Municipal Building Committee, Ken Carlson is the incumbent, and a new name, Stanislav Karachev. So, those are both for three-year terms ending June 30, 2023. Public Spaces, Cynthia Boyce is the incumbent, and there are two open seats. Cynthia will be a three-year, expiring June 2023. There's another three-year and a two-year for those two to fill that committee. The Recreation Committee, Tana Bobbitt is the incumbent. She will get a three-year seat, expiring in 2023. And then there's an open seat on that as well. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, Timothy McCall and Jeremy McKay, I'm sorry, Jeremy Kay, are both incumbents. Tim is a regular member, and Jeremy is an alternate. That first one is a five-year term, and the alternate is a two-year term. So, that would expire in 2025 and 2022 respectively. So, does anyone have any questions or comments on these lists? So, I guess what I would say is that we do, you know, a lot of outreach from this Select Board when we see that there are seats available to try to encourage people in the community to sign up. So, I think that we'll all probably try to see, you know, if we know anybody or hear from anybody, or encourage people to apply for these open seats. So, if somebody would like to make a motion and a second to appoint these uncontested volunteer seats for review and appointments according to the terms that are on the slate.
So moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Brusart.
Craig and Tom, and then we'll do a roll call vote, and it would be voting for the slate.
Barger Slate.
Brusart Slate.
King the Slate.
Lamb Slate.
Fulgenetti Slate.
Dottie, if I may, just for any applicants that may be watching, both for uncontested or contested seats, many people are very eager to come down and get sworn in by the town clerk's office once they hear they've been appointed or reappointed. I just wanted to ask that people please wait, especially this year, given that we are still closed to the public. The town clerk tomorrow will be sending an email out with instructions of how to be sworn in by any of the applicants appointed this evening. So, if people could just hold off, wait for that email, and then follow those directions, that would be helpful for our town clerk staff.
Okay, terrific. Okay, so for the contested volunteer appointments, under usual circumstances, we have all of the candidates come in, and we do an interview. Because of the way that this worked out with timing and on Zoom calls, we did not invite people to come in to the interview. Looking at it, there were a lot of new names, and I talked with Michael this afternoon, and I think what I'd like to do is look at each one of these individually, and whoever the select person's representative is on that committee, make a recommendation if you want to take a vote based on what the resumes were that were submitted, or would you prefer? See, the issue is, is that if some of these boards need to meet, we do need to vote on that tonight to at least ensure they have a quorum. But if they don't, and we think we want to interview the people for those positions, we're going to have to do this like on a kind of a case-by-case basis, or we could vote to appoint the incumbents and then interview the newer people that are applying. Does that make sense?
Do that tonight, Dottie, or we don't? We do the incumbents tonight, and then schedule another time for the non-incumbents? Is that what you're saying?
We could do, we could do it that way, or, you know, I'm just like kind of looking through. I think that's the best way to do it. I know in one case, I spoke to one of the people this afternoon and kind of talked to him. I really like to talk to the new people, because I, you know, sometimes they are volunteering for a committee that after you talk to them, it's really not what they wanted to do. Or sometimes we say, "Do you have the time for this?", and you talk about what the time commitment is, and it may not be of interest. Or, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of reasons. We all know that things happen during the interviews where people will either step back and say, "You know what? I think that other candidate should get it." So, I think that maybe we should do it that way. But if there's, if there's some that we want to vote on incumbents so that they can have the next meeting, and we can look at that. So, why don't we start with the Affordable Housing Trust? There's four spots available. We have Stephanie Alves, Samantha Hill, and Amy Rodriguez, that are all incumbents. And then we have two new names, Andrew Abramson and Ernesto Stiven, that are both interested in that position. I spoke with Andrew this afternoon, because he's a college student at UMass Amherst, and I was curious if he would be able to make the commitment when we go back to in-person meetings, if he was in school in Amherst. And he said that he thinks he'll be doing online courses, but I want people to know that in normal conditions, we're not allowed to meet by Zoom. This is by a special order, because we're under a state of emergency. So, if theoretically, if the governor lifted that state of emergency, we would theoretically go back to in-person meetings. Now, maybe he'll make a change to that and say, "I'm lifting the state of emergency, but I'm still going to allow the community to decide if they want to do Zoom or in-person, but we don't know about that yet." So, I just want to make sure that when we are talking to people, that they understand it could very well go back in-person meetings, so that would have to play into their availability. Anyone have any questions on that?
No, I don't think so.
So, Chuck, you're on the Affordable Housing Trust. Do you, I don't know if you guys have a meeting coming up? Do you want to wait on the vote totally? Or do you want to make a motion to vote for the three incumbents and then have interviews for the two, the two new names?
I make a motion for the three incumbents.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So, that's Chuck and Tom. So, let's do a roll call vote, and just name the three names in your, in your roll call vote.
Okay, Barger, Alves, Hill, and Rodriguez.
Brusart, Alves, Hill, Rodriguez.
King, Alves, Hill, Rodriguez.
Lamb, Alves, Hill, Rodriguez.
And Fulgenetti, Alves, Hill, Rodriguez. And we'll ask Mr. Abramson and Mr. Stiven to come to our next meeting, and we'll do an interview with them.
Excellent.
And the next one, the Commission on Disabilities, we have Jason Sutton is the incumbent, and then we have, oh, I'm sorry. I should have, can we amend that motion, Michael, to include the expiration of those three, three seats, because they're three two-year terms?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, for the next one, for the Commission on Disability, Jason Sutton is the incumbent. He is up for a three-year term renewal. And then we have two new names, Karen Katz and Jean Perrinello, to vie for one seat. So, I have been sitting in on the Commission on Disabilities meetings, and Jason is really, he's doing an incredible job with that. So, I wholeheartedly support voting for him as an incumbent, and then we can ask the other two candidates to come to our next meeting. So, I'd make a motion to appoint Jason Sutton for a three-year term ending June 30, 2023.
Barger, second set.
So, that's Fulgenetti, Barger, and a roll call vote.
Barger Sutton.
Brusart Sutton.
King Sutton.
Lamb Sutton.
And Fulgenetti Sutton, okay. So, the next one, the Community Preservation Committee. It's, there are three seats available, and they're all three-year terms. So, we have two incumbents, Ed Hands and Meredith Keach, and then we have three new names, Andrew Abramson, Nicole D'Asenzo, and Matthew Falconstein. So, in the way that we've been doing it, unless anyone has an objection, if somebody would like to make a motion, we can move forward.
I move that we appoint the incumbents and that the other three candidates be interviewed at our next meeting. Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Okay, Barger, Brusart, and a roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, Hands, and Keach.
Brusart, Hands, Keach.
King, Hands, Keach.
Lamb, Hands, Keach.
And Fulgenetti, Hands, Keach. Okay, the next one, the Conservation Committee. There are two seats available, and they're both incumbents, and they're three-year terms. We have Rory Calfeltts and John Thomas, and then the two new names are Charlie Malo and Grant West. Grant West also had applied for the uncontested seat, and we just appointed him to the Agricultural Committee and to the Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee. So, I feel good that he is involved in two of the committees, and we can maybe work with Charlie if the group agrees to reappoint the incumbents. I can reach out to Charlie and see if there's another area that he might be interested in.
I make a motion to vote in the two incumbents tonight.
Second, Brusart.
That's Craig and Tom, and a roll call vote.
Barger, Calfeltts, and Thomas.
Brusart, Calfeltts, Thomas.
King, Calfeltts, and Thomas.
Lamb, Calfeltts, and Thomas.
And Fulgenetti, Calfeltts, and Thomas. For the Economic Development Council, there are four open seats, and each one of them is for three years, expiring June 30, 2023. The three incumbents are Bruce Boyer, John Holbrook, and Dan Smith. And then there are two new names, Andrew Abramson and Matthew Whitman. I spoke to Andrew today, he was the college student. This was his fourth choice. He had some other choices that were indicated in our packet. I talked to him about what the Economic Development Committee does, and I, you know, just for everyone to know, we're really kind of more like a think tank and a brainstorming. We look at different projects or different things that we want to see move forward, but we're not policymakers. So, it's the kind of thing that if people were interested in that, they would be welcome to come to the meeting, join the meeting, participate in the meeting, and definitely have influence over the work that we're doing. And there are several committees that are like that. And so, if people don't get appointed to a committee, I would recommend that they, they at least attend and start to participate and, you know, be part of the conversation. So, with that said, I'd make an exception on this one. I would, I would appoint the three incumbents, and then I'd also appoint Matt Whitman. I've also spoken with Matt. He applied to be on the Economic Development Council for the last opening, so I know that he's been kind of in line to get in here. And so, I would make a motion to nominate the three incumbents and also Matt Whitman.
Just the same exact thing, Dottie.
Sorry, Mark, go ahead again.
I was going to say the exact same thing, because Matt Whitman was the person who had interviewed before and didn't get it, and then because of the fourth choice of Andrew, it was obvious to me, as you pointed out. So, I completely support that.
Chuck, did you? Matthew can be there at 1:00 on a Thursday, is that? Is there any issue about that?
No, right now, he can. And Chuck, did you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay, terrific. All right, so if somebody would like to make that motion?
I'll move that we appoint Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, and Whitman to the Economic Development Council.
And do I have a second?
Second, Brusart.
Okay, Craig and Tom, and the roll call vote.
Barger, Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, and Whitman.
Brusart, Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, Whitman.
King, Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, Whitman.
Lamb, Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, Whitman.
And Fulgenetti, Boyer, Holbrook, Smith, and Whitman. Terrific. The next is the Green Communities Committee. So, there's one seat available, and Christina Redford is the incumbent for a three-year seat. Craig, this is your committee. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think Christina is wonderful. She's the chair of the committee now. She's done a terrific job on the, on the, the plastic bag ban that we passed since rescinded by the governor, but hopefully it'll be back. And I would wholeheartedly support her for that committee.
Okay, the other two names were Casey Falconstein and Stanislav Karachev. Stanislav, we just appointed to the Municipal Building Committee, so I feel good about that. And Casey, I'll reach out to her and talk to her and see what other interests she has, and maybe she would be interested in filling one of the vacant seats. And very often, you know, as our board knows, if someone doesn't get appointed to a seat, I always reach out and try to have a conversation with them to see what are they interested in, so we can keep that in mind if something comes up. And almost, you know, I'd say most of the time, the thing that they're the most interested in isn't really the thing that they applied for. So, we can kind of keep our eye open for vacancies and things like that, or find other ways that the person can contribute. So, I'm happy to reach out to Casey. And if you want to make a motion, Craig?
Okay, it's Reford, R-E-F-F-O-R-D, Michael. So, I move that Christine Reford be appointed, reappointed to the Green Communities Committee.
Second that, Brusart.
Craig and Tom, and a roll call vote.
Barger, Reford.
Brusart, Reford.
King, Reford.
Lamb, Redford.
And Fulgenetti, Reford. Okay, the Human Rights Committee, there are three seats available for that, each of a three-year term. This is another committee where the more, the better. You know, if you're not actually on the committee, they welcome, welcome people to join in and contribute. We have three incumbents, Liz Bornstein, Karen Chan, and Irene Dean. And then we have one seat available, and we have Andrew Abramson again, Shereen Glover, and Guadalupe Jacquez. Guadalupe, I believe, applied for this before, and Shereen has been very active around these issues, and so has Andrew. So, they're three really great candidates, and...
Dottie, just a quick question, sorry to interrupt. My, I believe my data sheets show that there's three spots that are open?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you had mentioned four, I apologize.
Nope, three.
Got it.
And three incumbents. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I did think there was four, you're right. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally messed that one up.
Not at all, no.
There's only three seats available. If we were to vote for the incumbents, I would just ask, and I will reach out personally to the others, to, you know, invite them to get on. To, you know, in invite them to get on the list and come to the human rights meetings, whether they're by Zoom or in person. Because um their contributions will certainly be um valued.
Absolutely.
Shereen is on the um Green Communities Committee. I don't know whether her her term expired this year or. I don't I don't think so, but she's but she's somebody you want, we want to keep in mind also.
Right.
Her term is not expired, she's she's still.
Thank you, thank you, so I'm I move that we appoint the three incumbents. Uh to the Human Rights Committee.
Okay.
I second that.
So that's Craig and Tom and roll call vote.
Barger Bornstein, Chan, and Dean.
Broussard Bornstein, Chan, Dean.
King Bornstein, Chan, and Dean.
Lamb Bornstein, Chan, and Dean.
And full genetti Bornstein, Chan, and Dean. And the last one we have is for the Planning and Zoning Board, there is one regular seat and one alternate seat. Um we have two incumbents, Peter De Shen is the uh incumbent for the regular seat for five years. And Amos Ketum is the alternate member and that's a two-year seat. And then there's a third um name, Alan Weeks. And um from his uh resume, he'd actually been on the Planning and Zoning Board before. So um it's really good to have these names because sometimes during these terms, especially the ones that have a five-year term. If someone can't fulfill the whole term, it's good for us to know who else was interested in it. So if.
I move that we uh we nominate um the two incumbents for the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second that.
So that's Craig and Tom and a roll call vote.
Barger De Shen's and Ketum.
Broussard De Shen's, Ketum.
King De Shen and Ketum.
Lamb De Shen and Ketum.
And full genetti De Shen and Ketum. Great, thank you very much and uh thank you so much to all the people that are are willing to give their time and talent to the town. It really makes a big difference, um it's great to see new names and new people that want to contribute. And so um we definitely will find spots for people. And um you know, really thank you to the people that have been volunteers and been on these boards and committees. Um it really shapes um the culture of our community um with with these different people involved, so I appreciate that.
Donnie, it's Lisa, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Um can you tell me the motion in a second for that one, please, again?
Uh for the planning and zoning, it, the motion was Craig and the second was Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Let me just see where are we? Okay, next is um the discussion and possible vote for select board representative members. To the different boards and committees. So we have um. We have the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm I'm gonna go back to the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. And um then also we have the Audit Committee, the Budget Subcommittee, Economic Development Council. Green Communities Committee and Human Rights Committee. So for the Affordable Housing Trust, um each year, the board um appoints a select board representative to these committees. So what I would do is ask each person who is already on the committee if they if they're still willing to serve. Um or if they want to give that up and have somebody else uh take their place. So the first one with the Affordable Housing Trust, um Chuck, you've been on that committee for a couple of years now and doing a great job. You still loving it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, terrific.
I'm still willing to serve.
Anybody want to fight Chuck for the uh for the seat? No takers, all right, Chuck, um would somebody like to make a motion in a second and a roll call vote?
I'm moved.
Second.
So that's Craig and Tom and the roll call, starting with you, Craig.
Barger King.
Broussard King. Chuck.
King, King.
Lamb King.
And full genetti King, terrific. Um the next for the Audit Committee, um I believe Chuck, you're the representative on that as well.
Yes, I am, and I'm loving it, and I'm willing to serve.
Okay, terrific, and uh as.
So moved.
The CPA is great to have on that. Craig made the motion.
Second, Broussard.
Tom seconded, roll call vote.
Barger King.
Broussard King.
King, King.
Lamb King.
And full genetti King, terrific. Uh Budget Subcommittee, I think that is, I'm doing this off memory, so it's fine, I know it's Tom. Craig, are you the other person?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you're both still uh willing to serve?
Absolutely. I am, yep.
Okay, I would make a motion to appoint uh Tom and Craig to the Budget Subcommittee.
I will second that, Barger.
So that was full genetti and Barger, uh and a roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, Barger, and Broussard.
Broussard, Barger, Broussard.
King, Barger, Broussard.
Lamb, Barger, Broussard.
Full genetti, Barger, Broussard.
And Donnie, just a question, I think we might have had um Age Friendly Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to that one.
Deal, gotcha.
Um and Economic Development Council, uh Mark and I are both on that committee, I'd like to remain on it, Mark.
As would I, absolutely, and I just changed, uh joined the um Chamber of Commerce, which hope hopefully will um. Somehow improve what I can do on the economic.
Excellent.
Great, I'd also like to say Economic Development Council is one of those boards where I would love to fill the room with people that are interested. In furthering economic development um to share ideas and interest. And the thing that that's good about maybe doing that is if you might not be able to make it to all the meetings, but you could make it to some of them. Um we really welcome the feedback from the community on that, so I'm hoping that. Um and especially where we can do the, if we, once we get back. We've actually asked the boards and committees to hold off on meeting that didn't have a legal requirement to do so. Um while we tried to catch up with our staff and getting ready for a town meeting and elections and COVID and everything. But we'll be starting to meet again soon, and if we're able to do these on Zoom, I think it um really makes it a good opportunity. For people that might not be able to make it to a meeting on a Thursday at one o'clock, to be able to at least uh join or listen in or contribute in some way. So um I hope people will will remember that, especially for this committee. Um so if um Craig, you, would you like to make a motion on that one?
I'm sorry, I'm sure I'm so moved.
The second, Broussard.
So that's Craig and Tom and Craig, uh if you'd like to vote for full genetti Lamb.
Barger, full genetti and Lamb.
Broussard, full genetti Lamb.
King, full genetti and Lamb.
Lamb, full genetti, lamb.
And full genetti, full genetti Lamb. Terrific. The next one is the Green Communities Committee and that is Craig.
I'm I'm very happy to continue to serve.
Terrific.
Anybody want to fight me for it or not?
Nope, you've got, you guys are doing great work, so we appreciate your leadership on that, Craig. Um I'll make a motion to nominate Craig for the Green Communities Committee.
Second that, Broussard.
So that's full genetti, Broussard, and a roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, Barger.
Broussard, Barger.
King, Barger.
Lamb, Barger.
Full genetti, Barger. And the Human Rights Committee, um again, you know, I keep saying it over and over again, but that's another committee that um. The more people that can join in on that, um they appreciate it, they do really amazing um events. And uh really a great group with a lot of energy, a lot of creativity. It's a great group to be a part of, Craig, did you, you're the representative on that, you, would you still like to be on there?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Um I will make a motion for Craig to be the representative to the Human Rights Committee.
Second that, Broussard.
So that's full genetti, Broussard, and a roll call vote, Craig.
Barger, Barger.
Broussard, Barger.
King, Barger.
Lamb, Barger.
Full genetti, Barger. All right, now to go back to the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. Um Michael, I had a question for you that I didn't really notice earlier. We have that listed as a selectman's appointment, but we don't have it listed in the Boards and Committee Appointments.
Yeah, so um the the appointments we did tonight were part of the annual reappointment process. Uh the H R advisory committee is new, it has not had any appointments to date. Uh so before, uh unfortunately COVID hit, we were gearing up, we had some applicants. And we're um looking to actually recruit a couple more so we can uh appoint the whole committee at once. Uh then obviously everything kind of stopped, so our intention is to reach back out to the applicants who apply now, you know, a few months ago. Uh regage and make sure they're still interested, um try to drum up some additional interest and then come before you. Uh hopefully with an entire slate to appoint to the H R advisory committee to kind of get that off and running. Um is I I think Donnie knows and some of you may know, Kristen Kennedy, our Director of Health and Food Services. Somehow, uh despite everything else going on, has managed to keep the ball rolling, uh working with Boston University and their Metro Bridge Program. And we really have some great things coming out of that and work towards the age-friendly uh process. So it's really exciting stuff, so we do hope to have a new committee before you shortly.
Okay, great, um I would love to do that, I, you know, was, I've done a lot of work in the age-friendly world. And and kind of brought this concept to Easton to be able to get the designation. If somebody else has a real passion for this, I would be happy to step back and let them um be the the appointee. But I would still participate in the meetings, um because I really um feel very passionate about that work. So um does anybody want to be the appointee to that committee? Okay, if you'd like to appoint me, and I'd also say that if anybody uh can join in those meetings from time to time. Um it it would be really great because it really is an overlay over so many of the other things that we're doing. So Craig, if you'd like to make the motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
And so that was Craig and Tom and a roll call vote.
Roger, full genetti.
Broussard, full genetti.
King, full genetti.
Lamb, full genetti.
And full genetti, full genetti.
Excellent.
Terrific, um one of the other committees that also hasn't met yet that we need to be looking at, Michael. Is the committee that is going to review um. The tax relief program for the seniors, so.
A taxation aid committee, correct.
Right, have we gotten any uh applications for that or have we advertised for that yet?
Uh we did advertise, I believe we got a couple applicants, but again, that'll be part of that uh push as well, once annual appointments are done.
All right, terrific. All right.
Donnie, does that committee also handle the new veterans uh tax aid that we passed uh recently? Or is it just, is that is that something separate?
Michael, is it just Corey that does that or?
Yeah, the new the new veterans, I believe, is is some combination of Corey in the assessor's office through the existing uh tax and abatement process. Through their office, this committee is part of that fund that was uh developed that people may donate to. And then this committee will need to distribute those specific funds, separate from the veterans that were just asked.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder to people at home, when you get your tax bill, there will be a box to check off. Um to see whether you want to contribute voluntarily to the fund to provide tax relief to the seniors in our community. And thank you to uh Mark and Tom for bringing that forward, um it's a great idea. So I'm not sure, um tax bills went out a couple of months ago, so it'll be interesting to keep track of. How many people took advantage of that or not, I'm just thinking now, my tax bill comes in, I is an escrow in my mortgage. So I didn't even, I don't even know how I would do, I would have to do that separately, but I didn't even think to do that. Um just just as a thing that just came through my brain. Um anyway, if nobody has any other questions, we will go on to the next item, which is the standing update on COVID response, Michael.
Thank you, yes, I'll I'll be brief, um I just wanted to keep the board up to date and the residents. Where that we do, the Eastern Emergency Management Team continues to meet. Um we have gone from um daily meetings to three times a week, uh but continue to be very busy. Um just quickly, you know, overall, the US continues to um unfortunately be the epicenter of the pandemic. Um as you as you know, and probably seen in the news, there are a number of hotspots now in various states. Some states actually rolling backwards in their reopening process as a result of that. Uh in Massachusetts, um we are fortunate that things continue to um move a little more slowly here. You know, you can literally see the curve has flattened, uh and things are cautiously and slowly opening, so we hope that continues here. Um in Easton, you'll you'll see the same, um you know, new cases continue to come in, but at a much slower rate than previously. Um on June twenty-second, uh Massachusetts entered phase two, step two. Um and so in addition to the outdoor dining, which we've recently talked about the last few meetings, indoor dining, limited indoor dining is now also available. Um office spaces have increased from twenty-five percent capacity to fifty percent capacity. And phase three uh could begin as early as July sixth, but uh we're waiting further word from the governor for when phase three will start. Um and we continue to work with our restaurants, the Board of Health is uh very busy working with camps. Um as the summer is now underway, as well as um Planning Department, our office, Health Food Services, working with specific businesses. As they continue to uh open and develop their COVID plans. Um town office uh continued to be remote, um we are uh I think pretty close, looking at opening on an appointment-only basis. It's kind of a first step before completely reopening, uh so please pay uh attention to that. I'm sorry, the slide kind of drops off here, uh but um you know, we had a very successful, uh and I'll speak in a little bit, very successful. Town meeting and election this Saturday, uh with all the COVID protocols in place, uh and that went very well, we got a lot of good feedback from that. Uh as already mentioned, town parks and fields continue to be open for use with social distancing guidelines as well as playgrounds. Uh and again, you know, mu- municipal services continue, uh DPW Public Safety and Special Services are all conducting inspections. As long as they can adhere to proper social distancing practices. And that's all I have.
Okay, so I guess with COVID, uh probably the one thing I would think of is just, you know, to underscore how important it is to wear a mask. When you can't be physically distant from people. And um I can't tell you how many times I run back to my car to grab my mask when I'm going into someplace. Because now that it's nice out and more people are around, you have a tendency to kind of think things are back to normal and forget about it. Um but when we see the places all over the country that are having setbacks because they are um falling back into the. The routines of not uh, you know, not not doing the hand washing and wearing the masks. Um I think Massachusetts is doing a really good job and I hope that we stay that way, especially in our community. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the COVID? All right, well, thank you, uh Michael, and and to the staff that have worked so hard on keeping us in in front of that, um it's very much appreciated. Um would you like to talk about any of the temporary outdoor dining permits that have been issued?
Sure, so I think um we're up to a total of ten now since your last meeting, uh we've issued three additional. Um as you know, um because we had a meeting, the Farmer's Daughter, as well as La Familia and Doyle's as well. Um this past, I believe they opened outside this past weekend, so um businesses continue to apply, we got a couple more inquiries today. Um so we look forward to working with them and getting them open, as I said earlier, they're also now opening for indoor as well. Um in terms of contract awards, um is the board is, I'm sure very well aware, you had the meeting weekly up in, uh through the month of June. So uh there was no need to exercise that, uh the town administrator, uh you know, didn't need to sign any contracts. And then the only other notes I had, I just want to um give a big thank you uh regarding a very successful, as I mentioned, town meeting. Uh to Stonehill, to our entire Eastern Emergency Management Team, uh Police Fire, DPW, Board of Health, Town Clerk, Town Moderator, Town Counsel. And our residents who um really showed up, um came prepared with their masks, followed our rules and really did a great job. Uh I thought it was a terrific turnout, I just really appreciate all the work that went into it. And again, flows into our annual town election, again, you know, very different this year, June on Saturday. Uh but just wanted to thank the Town Clerk's Office, uh the cert team, police, schools, DPW, Board of Health again for all their work.
Terrific, and um I guess congratulations to all of the re-elected. Congratulations to Craig, it's nice to see you uh still in your little square module on our Zoom meeting. And um thank you to everybody that did come out and vote, uh congratulations to the re-elected and the newly elected. Um so we have a a year of a lot of challenges ahead of us and we're gonna need all hands on deck to get through that. Um we, I personally got a lot of feedback and comments on uh both the town meeting and the elections. That people were very nervous going into the uh venues and. that people were very nervous going into the, uh, venues and came out, you know, very appreciative and felt very comfortable. So, um, you know, congratulations to everybody that made that happen. Um, before we do the select board notes, it will just do the acceptance of the minutes so that I don't forget them. Um, if everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes of June 22nd, and if somebody would like to make a motion in a second?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
All in favor, uh, starting with you, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So selectmen notes, uh, Craig?
I, I wanted to echo what you and, and Mike said, to thank people for, uh, turning out for, for the, uh, town meeting, uh, and for, um, braving the, the elements, uh, on Saturday for, uh, for the town election. I am, uh, very excited about the opportunity to serve the town of Easton for another three years. Uh, so I thank everybody who came out.
Great. Uh, Tom?
I just want to echo what you folks have said, uh, congratulations Craig on a well-earned victory, and to all the folks that put themselves out there and, uh, were elected, congratulations. Um, and also, again, and, uh, a large amount of thanks to the, the town, um, the schools, uh, all the committees, uh, and certainly all the, uh, team members that made it possible to have, uh, a very hectic, uh, engagement with our community over a couple of events. Um, I know it was very hard, and I know that it was a lot of thoughtfulness and discussion and effort that went into it, uh, but I think that, uh, it was all done for the better of the community and the town. Uh, a lot of good discussion, I think, was had at many, um, points in time. And, uh, I think I look forward to that going on this year. That's what I have.
Great, thanks, Tom. Chuck?
Congratulations to Craig, and I also am so pleased and thankful for the job that everyone did in getting, uh, the town meeting, uh, safe, and, uh, so many of the public that, uh, attended. That's it.
Thank you. And Mark?
Uh, congratulations to Chuck, all the, uh, everybody who was victorious. Thank you to everybody who put their hat in the ring, uh, thank you to everyone who serves. And, um, thank you to Mike, Connor, Wendy, Lisa, uh, Danielle, Pam, uh, Peter, all those departments, uh, that brought together the, uh, town meeting and, uh, the town election. It went off without a hitch, uh, it was very safe and very comfortable. Um, it's a job well done, again, thank you.
Great, thank you. And, um, let me see, for my notes, I just wanted, in addition to what everyone has said, um, mentioned that the Eastern Food Pantry has put out a notice that they're in, uh, dire need of, uh, contribution. So if you, uh, are out shopping and you're able to pick up some extra, um, extra food, uh, there, if you go to the Eastern Food Pantry's Facebook page, or you look in the Town Crier, which is a weekly email you can subscribe to by going to the town's website, uh, www.easton.m-a.us, and subscribe to the Town Crier, you'll get a weekly email with notices of everything happening around town. Um, and there's detail in there about what the Eastern Food Pantry is looking for. Uh, they also take, um, uh, checks and donations that way for some of the food that they might need that's, uh, more perishable. So I know that, uh, Ken and his team are working incredibly hard. We've, have a big need, um, now more than ever. And if people need help from the pantry, um, please reach out, um, and, and you'll be, you'll be served. So, uh, thank you to all the people that do that. And, uh, wishing everyone a safe. Okay, thank you. Uh, we do have some people in the participants, uh, for the attendees. I don't know, I haven't seen anything come up in the Q and A. Um, if anyone has any comments or questions and they want to post it in the Q and A now, or raise your hand. Um, Peter Wiggins, do you want to put something in the Q and A? We'll give him a second to, to type.
Dottie, I don't know if he has something new, he had previously, uh, just wanted to share that he was on Eastern on Friday, um, ate lunch at McGuire's and went to Shaw's, and was, everyone was following the rules and wearing masks, so.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Peter. Uh, Peter is referred to as the unofficial Mayor of Norton. And so we appreciate you joining our meetings to see how we're doing things in Easton. Um, and, uh, Peter just recently retired from Roach Brothers, so, uh, thank you, Peter, for, for serving your community too. All right, well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Barger.
Craig and Tom, all in favor?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes. Thank you, everyone, have a great week and enjoy the holiday.
Bye, everybody, thank you.
You too.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.